...period. And I have actually two separate sheets of folks that have signed up. And we ask you to please limit your remarks to three minutes each. I have a timer. And if you could please state your name and address for the record, just so the clerk has it. So I'll start with this sheet, Kimberly Schlichting. Okay? Get that close?
No.
Excellent. I'm very sensitive about names. Be careful about that.
No, Eastern European source. Okay. So I'm Kimberly Schlichting, and I live at 6 Middle Street in Hadley, Massachusetts. I have taught at Northampton High School, or excuse me, in Northampton for seventeen years. Eleven at middle school and six at the high school. And I'm here to say a few words about a potential late start at the high school. I believe that it is not beneficial to the students of Northampton High School to have a late start of a mere half an hour or thirty minutes. That would cost ninety thousand plus dollars. This money would force the elimination of approximately nine to twelve classes, depending on the number of teachers, et cetera. Therefore, there would be fewer choices for the students, fewer electives, and the remaining classes would all have more students. The overrides passed in recent years show that the citizens of Northampton value more classes, more electives, and retaining the arts, and also the music programs and AP classes. This diversity of offerings make Northampton High School a stronger school that attracts many student-of-choice students from outside the district. Taking ninety thousand dollars out of the budget and eliminating these courses for a mere thirty-minute later start time does not seem like a wise trade-off. Thank you for considering my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person who is signed up is Jeremy Whalen.
Hello again. Probably sick of seeing my face, but I'm Jeremy Whalen. I live at 214 Pomeroy Lane in Amherst, but I come as a representative. I'm the technology teacher at the high school. I wanted to talk a little bit about tonight about the proposed late start and the impending cuts that would happen as a result. The first thing I want to do is kind of reframe how we've been looking at this. The first thing I want to do is I want to commend, actually, all the individuals that are proponents of the late start because they're looking at this in a scientific way, and they're saying, "This is beneficial to our students." And I think that that is often lost in the fact that when I come here and I say that I am opposed to this, I am not opposed to the idea of enriching our students with what is clearly has been studied scientifically, but what would happen, the detriment that would be caused because of these cuts. And I think it's important to really frame that appropriately. So we're not against a later time. We're against, and I speak for myself and many of the teachers that unfortunately weren't, are not able to be here tonight because of eighth grade parents' night at the high school. It's something that, as when we're looking at ninety-plus thousand dollars, it's a very -- these things enrich our classes. And we're able to proudly provide a wide range of courses in both electives and in our advanced courses. And to prioritize that late start over some of these other things, I think it comes at a lost ultimate, an overall loss for our students. So speaking to many of my colleagues, almost unanimously at the high school, teachers are opposed to this for the reason that it would be so detrimental to the in-class curriculum and resources that we offer. I would love to see us look at this. And I also extend myself in looking at different ways that we can approach this, maybe on the back end in making a parent-to-parents, maybe a campaign of sorts, a task force of sorts, to look at this for encouraging healthy behaviors at home before they come to school. So getting to bed sooner and doing campaigns. We've had great work with the Northampton Prevention Coalition on drug abuse and drug statistics. We could also look at things of that nature for campaigns for getting to bed earlier. So again, I am not opposed to a late start, but this plan, I am very opposed, and many of my colleagues are too, in essence of these very harsh cuts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy. The next, perfect timing. The next speaker who's signed up is Paul Voss.
So yeah, my name is Paul Voss, and I am in the education field. I teach engineering at Smith College and see the results of our education system firsthand. I'm very concerned about losing teachers, about trading, about possibly trading teachers and firing teachers and reducing the classroom experience for other benefits which might include the late start. I have not been opposed to the late start. I'm very open-minded about it, but when we start talking about numbers like ninety thousand dollars and letting three people go, about losing arts or losing AP classes, the cost is far, far too high. And I would just encourage you to take that off the table and make sure that the money is going into the classroom and not into fuel and buses if that's the choice. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So those were the three folks who had signed up tonight. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during the public comment? Going once? Okay. Excellent. We'll now move into our reports and recommendations part of the agenda. The first item on the agenda is a gift, and this requires a vote of the school committee to accept it. And it's a gift of software for the NHS Social Studies program. And I believe, I'm not sure if you'll speak to it, the business administrator.
Yeah. The Northampton PTO, which is to make a donation of one hundred and twenty-five dollars to the high school for an online timeline generator software license for use by one of our social studies teachers at the high school.
Okay.
Move to accept gift for software of Northampton High School Social Studies.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Minnick.
I'm perfectly happy to have this happen. My question is, didn't we have a discussion about whether or not people can specify what a gift is for, and is this in violation of what we just said we wouldn't do?
Well, this is the PTO that's buying supplies for the schools.
And I realize it's in response to a wish list.
And I think we, I think that's different than the other areas where we've talked about that.
Okay.
Although, I would like to note that it really should be referred back to policy, rules of policy, because I thought it was supposed to be already, but we really do need to look at that and examine, you know, the wishes, so.
Okay.
So I looked at the genesis of the policy, and I believe that it was not actually, though you could read it as saying, "We don't want people to restrict gifts," and I think there's a logic to looking at that and rules of policy, but I think it tracks from a master general law that says that it will be spent at the school committee's discretion, because otherwise there'd be a problem with the fact that the cash gift was not appropriated. So basically, it says, there's right, master general law says, "You must spend everything according to your budget, except in the case of cash gifts, which can be spent at the discretion." So I think that's where the policy came from, and that has nothing, that has nothing to do with the policy issues about accepting restrictive gifts. So just, ours would be an additional kind of restriction.
And when was that? When you looked at?
The law.
Yeah, when did we make that response? So I can look it up and see it since I'm on the policy.
You can just look up the policy, and it says at the bottom, the source, and it's the MGL section, and you can look it up.
I was under the impression that this was already in rules and policy. I thought rules and policy was already in the look at this. Am I?
It's scheduled for rules and policy.
We were supposed to. I just haven't had a meeting scheduled yet.
It's scheduled. You just have to have a meeting come.
Yes.
So I believe it already is there for study.
Sorry to have taken us off track.
No problem. No problem.
I'm assuming, sure. So the software belongs to the district?
It's a license, so it would only be, I believe it's a one-year license.
But it belongs to the district for the year, so that?
For that year, yes.
Teachers at JFK or anywhere who had.
No, it's, I don't have the specifics on this package, but a lot of times the licenses are limited to the number of users. So it's possible for one hundred and twenty-five dollars, it might be limited to one user.
Like a one?
I can check on.
On one machine or something?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, any other questions or comments? I was resisting the urge to make a timeline joke about the master general law, but all those in favor of accepting the gift, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much to the PTO for that gift. The next item is the vote to accept a gift, and this is the gift of a mural for JFK Middle School. And I believe we have folks, Heather Berlin is here to discuss that. And I recognize you and your colleague who I'm, sorry, I don't.
Michelle Mallory.
Michelle Mallory, sorry.
Hi there. My name's Heather Berlin. I work at NHS. I'm one of the ELL teachers.
And I'm Michelle Mallory, one of the art teachers here at JFK.
Yeah. So we are the masterminds of what we're calling the JFK Community Mural. Can you hear me okay? So I have a little slideshow behind you, so I'll just refer your attention to it as I ask Mr. Provost to do the clicking. Not yet.
I'll be happy to comply.
Yeah, you can click to the second slide. It's just a few slides, so you may not need to move too much.
This one?
Yeah. Okay. So we are here because, although you have already seen the proposal, when you reviewed the NEF proposal to grant for the grant, because the mural will be on the exterior of the building of JFK, the front of the building, in a pretty prominent location, we've been asked to come again to present in order to confirm that you support us in this project. So I work at NHS. Previously, I worked at JFK for a few years, and I live in this community, so I'm very committed to the community, the youth, and to community development in Northampton. And I see this project as based in community development and in youth empowerment. Before working at JFK, I worked as a muralist in Philadelphia, and I worked on a project in South Hadley, doing a mural at Beach Ground Spark. So these are just a couple of pictures from that project. And as you can see, it's completely, it's student-driven, lots and lots of collaboration with youth, and this project at JFK will be the same. Do you want to go to the next slide? So this is the proposed site. You can see there's two walls there. We haven't decided which we're going to paint on yet. I would love to paint on both, but Leslie Wilson has just encouraged me to limit myself, and I think it's probably wise in starting small. So we're going to pick one of these walls, and the mural will be painted after school and over an April break camp with JFK students and also with high school students who are going to apply to be a muralist assistant. And then after April vacation time period, we will probably be working on touch-ups and working on really polishing the mural and making it look sharp, making it look really professional, so that it can serve as both an inspiration to beautify the community and also as a symbol of the project, to show a positive message for us for many years to come. The next slide. So these are just a few images that I wanted to show you, just to give you a general sense of what it may look like, right? So the theme is going to be, is going to be developed with the youth, with the students. So I really can't say what it will look like yet. We have some ideas, obviously. We're artists, we're always thinking. But we want the theme really to come out of our conversations with the youth. The top-left mural is the finalized mural in South Hadley that I did with the youth commission there. It was actually partially funded by Spiffy, and it's based on some activities that were done in South Hadley around the Above the Influence campaign. The other three murals, one of them I did not work on, but the other two I did in Philadelphia. The bottom-right mural is one of Martin Luther King on the side of the seminary that he attended outside of Philadelphia in Chester. It's a really, really fun project. And then the mural to the left is inside of a phoenix. And on the top, you can see that's inside of a school, and the theme of that mural was education as a form of empowerment for youth and inspiration connection to the greater world community. So again, this is really theoretical. I mean, it may look sort of something like this. These murals all have inspired me, and so it may reference that stylistically, but I just wanted to give you a general sense so that you had an idea. And as school committee members, you know, we welcome your input and your questions in order to help us to develop this project. Does anybody have any questions or? Yeah, you can turn the lights on. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the school committee? Mrs. Minnick.
I think this sounds like an incredibly exciting project, but I also have a concern. And I'll tell you from whence my concern arises, it's due to the fact that I sat on the committee that did the renovation of this building twenty-some-odd years ago. And I just want to be respectful of the architect's view of the building, the, you know, the architectural facade, the balance, and, you know, you know what I'm saying? Sort of the, I just want to be sure.
To fit in architecturally, so that it still feels good.
Well, yeah, that's part, yes, partly. And I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want somebody to, like, hang something gaudy or tacky from the front portico, because I think the thing has architecture, you know, strong architectural lines that were designed to look a certain way, and maybe even to evoke a feeling of an old-fashioned schoolhouse cupola or something like that. So I mean, whatever the architect's intention was in designing the building the way he did, I don't want to come along after the fact and put something that will detract from that. It looks to me like the two walls that you've selected, one is very much off to the side and farther recessed, to the other one, is it facing the side parking lot, or is it actually facing the front?
Do you want to go back to that one? It's the, just the second slide. So to the right of that, that farthest to the right purple box is the front entrance.
Right. But is that wall facing the front, or is that facing?
Facing the front, so it's very prominent.
It is facing the front. Okay.
It actually faces the sidewalk a little bit, I mean, the parking lot a little bit. It's on a slant. So it doesn't.
Yes.
It's not a right.
Okay.
It is kind of on a slant.
However, it's very visible from the road and from the front of the building, from the.
Well, which is not inappropriate for the, for a school building. So I'm not sure that I'm saying I don't want it there. I'm just saying that I would want to be careful about positioning a mural on a school building. I want it to be visible to the community, because that's part of your intention in putting it there, is to create community. And yet, I do want to be a little careful about, you know, a traditional look to a building that was designed in a specific way. So I guess, now that I've grilled you, I would ask if we could get, you know, a recommendation from the principal of this building. Not that she wanted to be put in the spot, but.
I really expect to be.
She knows me too well.
My recommendation as far as the project, or as far as?
I hope that your recommendation as far as the project is that it go forward.
Absolutely.
I'm just asking about the location of the mural, maybe.
I think that what we would need to do is we'll take a look at the plan and see where it makes the most sense. I'm very much with you around maintaining the integrity of the front of the building. I also think it will add something to what we're doing here, and it'll really reflect the culture of JFK and our community as a whole. So I think we'd like it to be in a place that is really visible. But I do think that the choice will be made once we have an idea of what it's going to look like.
Okay.
I was leaning towards the back spot. I'm not sure that they were. We haven't really had this conversation, but I think we'll have some thoughtful, you know, planning of where it's going to go.
Okay.
Ms. DeGaulle.
While I understand what Ms. Minnick is saying, I also kind of think that if you're going to design a school, it's kind of like a classroom. You have a classroom, and then the kindergarten teacher comes in and decorates the school. So to me, it seems like if the architect were to, architect were to designing the school, would be flexible to the creativity and the community and the student-generated art that would be put on it. I don't see that it would be disrespectful to it. I mean, maybe if, you know, something disrespectful to the student population in general, you know, against what we believe in, but as far as just artistic and what I've seen up here, I don't find any of the four up there to be tacky at all. And I'm sure that they still wouldn't be tacky.
I never meant to imply that.
I know, I know. But you know, but it's like going into the different schools. When I go into the different schools, all four of the different elementary schools have different projects and different focuses on the wall, and each one, it creates who it is as a, as an entity, as that school, as that culture. I think that JFK can have that. I think personally, having been here, went to JFK myself, so I've seen JFK for years and years and years, and too many years. And I think that it's gone through changes, but I think the changes are positive, and as long as the students are the thought, even if it's wrong, I don't think the architect would be offended. I think that we're doing what's the most right that we believe that we can do. And I have faith in Ms. Wilson, and I have faith in the art teacher, and the other one who worked for years. And it's great work up there, too.
I also want to say, I think one of the, one of the best things that we've done here is actually take down some of the artwork that was originally here that was not student work. And the entire building is full of student work, and that was just such an amazing thing to do as far as empowering the students and also having them take some ownership and some pride in their building. So I think this is just another way to continue on that path with our kids.
I agree. And I also just wanted to say, because as we come into this room, all the beautiful art, the arts on the wall and how it's continually being changed, and I'd love to be able to see that it's reflected, because I think that one of the problems that we have with our community, I was just talking to somebody who's going to be moving soon, so they don't have to go to the high school, and got into a conversation as far as that goes. And I think that what people perceive to see and what actually is within the buildings and is there is really different in some ways. And I think that I really wish that we could get out there and see things like that, you know, and just be more community-minded that way.
And I, Ms. Minnick.
And I have one further final concern, I think.
Can I respond to that first? I was just going to say that I hope that we can honor all of the people who have made this building beautiful already, and at the same time, give our students a voice in how it looks, make them feel at home here as well. So a balance between all of these things is sort of what I'm going for. But yes, go ahead.
My last concern is actually a very practical consideration, and that is, if there should come a time when someone decided they did not like that mural, when you paint on any kind of masonry like that, you end up with a problem taking it off, don't you? I mean, then you have to sandblast, and I wouldn't want it to damage the structure.
May it be defaced, or?
I'm saying thirty years from now, if someone decided they did not like that mural, or if.
They wanted to remove it?
If there was a desire to remove it, or if it became less contemporary with what people were thinking, and you, and they wanted to paint a different mural, or if they just want, you know, if, for whatever reason, if it were defaced and it had to be removed, are we talking sandblasting, or is this something?
So the technique that we're hoping to use is to paint on canvas, then glue it to the brick, which is very typical these days. It's been being done for about twenty-five years in Philadelphia, and the murals have stood up very, very well. It's just as good as any other paint. The glue is very strong. In that sense, it is permanent, and so in thirty years, if people change their mind and they don't like it, it would be very difficult to remove the glue and the canvas. It would have to be painted over or covered.
Have we spoken to our maintenance crew to find out how they feel about all this?
Central Services is very much in support of this. And so they have all the information, they have the paint and the canvas and all the supplies, and yeah, they're very much in support of this.
Thank you.
And just as a historical note, further date your service on that committee, we're, actually, we're paying, making the final payment on JFK this year.
Woo!
We're paying off the mortgage this year on the renovations that were.
Is there any leftover at the end? Can we replace these chairs? I apologize.
Seriously, I hate these chairs.
There's none left over. So, Ms. Hennessy.
Just a quick, I really love this, and I love that you're using high school students and middle school students together and really empowering them. And I also think that there's such a possibility to include, when it's done, elementary school students. I know my first graders, is it Saul Dewitt? Is that a muralist? So my son is studying him in first grade right now. And so I was thinking, well, like, it would be great to kind of bring in some of the elementary schools in this, in the future. I think it's great, so thank you.
Yeah, it'd be great to do more public art.
Yeah.
Okay. So any other, any other questions or other ideas or concerns? Okay. So then the issue before you is a motion to vote to, I guess, accept the gift of this mural being applied to JFK Mills.
Make a motion to accept the gift of the mural for JFK.
Second.
So there's a motion made in second. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
And thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Do you mind passing me mine?
I'm trying to reject it right now.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a vote, and this is actually a vote in the school committee. We discussed this at our last meeting, but we wanted to put it on the agenda. This is a vote to authorize, give the superintendent the authorization to be able to, to be able to execute the various contracts that will happen throughout the Jackson Street Playground construction project.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute contracts for Jackson Street Playground project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything more to add to that?
I do not.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. You are duly authorized. So we will now move on to a presentation by the superintendent of the first look at the FY 2016 budget for the Department of Public Schools. I will turn the floor over to the superintendent.
It's my pleasure to come before the committee tonight with my first look at the FY 16 budget. We've been working on this budget since the beginning of December, and we're looking forward to lulling up the process in the next month if all goes well. Tonight's presentation isn't a detailed look at the budget, but is intended to give sort of an overview of where we believe we stand at this point in time and what we're hoping to accomplish in the next budget. Our goals are to create a simplified and highly transparent budget document. I'm not making, casting any aspersions on prior budgets, but what we'd really like to do is, wherever possible, let simplicity be our guide and let transparency be our guide, so that it's a document that ideally, anyone would be able to pick up and understand. We're also looking to facilitate greater cost center-based budgeting. One of the things that has become apparent to me and to Ms. Walzak as we look through the current budget is large portions of the budget reside in district-wide cost centers. And that really constrains the ability of principals and school councils to make substantive decisions for their own buildings. One of the goals of Ed Reform, as you know, was to try to create greater democracy and greater voice and greater autonomy at the building level, which is very difficult to do when all the money is sitting within cost center accounts. So the idea is not that the central office would relinquish its authority. We would still be in the, in the position of monitoring and approving or disapproving what principals were proposing to do with their money, but we would like to try to get more resources to them and less. to them and less out of centralized accounts. Also, using a collaborative process to develop budget recommendations. I'll be honest, my first time through in Northampton, the budget calendar crept up on me a little bit faster than I thought it was going to. And so we had to schedule an eight-hour collaborative meeting on Tuesday to develop some of the recommendations that you see before you tonight. But I think that the other administrators who are here in the room can say, everything that you see here tonight was decided as a group and has 100% support of all the administrators in the district. And that's really a process that I would like to continue moving forward. Also, when you get the final budget documents, one of the challenges, since we're trying to make these changes, is to provide continuity of information from prior budgets to the new budget. Because if we're budgeting in a different style...
Sorry, I'm not sure what you said.
The budget... If we're budgeting in a different style, it's important to sort of be able to follow the thread going back to prior year budgets. So if you see large changes within individual accounts that don't necessarily reflect, follow all the way down to the bottom line because they're offset by other changes in accounts, it's important to kind of be able to trace the money back, see, okay, so prior to this budget, maybe that money was sitting in a district-wide account for special education programs, but maybe now it lives in the building for their special education program. So we want to be able to provide some information that allows you to kind of translate from budget to budget as we go through this transitional budget year. And then also, we'd like to enhance stability and sustainability along with the city's overall goal for financial stabilization over the next several years. So at the last school committee meeting, the clear directive of the committee was for me to start with a level services budget. If there was money left on top of the level services budget, but below the 2.75%, to direct that toward late start. But if not, then to do the funding for the late start by doing reductions at the high school. So first part of that process is to identify what exactly level services looks like. So here are fixed cost increases in a level services budget. One of the things that I'll point out, and I think is important to remember all the way through this discussion, is 2.75% on our budget is about $725,000. So you can see, just looking at salaries, we're already over 2.75%. Next thing I'd point out is utilities. This is $176,000 increase. This, I think, is a little bit of an aberration in the budget. It appeared, we know that it's underbudgeted for this year. It looks like it was level funded from the prior budget. So that really, I think, reflects a two-year increase. I think in FY 17 budget, we're likely barring radical changes in energy markets to be looking at something more like an $80,000 increase in utilities. But we have to soak up that two-year increase in this budget in order to make sure that the lights stay on and the buildings stay heated. Supply accounts is another area where there's a structural deficit within the current budget, which became apparent in many of our collaborative discussions on creating this budget, particularly in the area of textbooks. And particularly in textbooks for handwriting without tears and math investigations. Because as we were drilling down on this issue with principals, we finally figured out that the money for the textbooks that runs their programs doesn't actually exist within the budget. And what had been done historically is principals provided a textbook order, which central office either filled at the end of the year with leftover money in accounts or didn't fund. In order to get to a real budget that accurately reflects the costs of our district, I think you have to put the amount for the consumable supplies we know we're going to use in the budget, rather than leaving them unbudgeted and hoping the magic money appears at the end of the year. So we're putting that in the budget. We have increases of about $60,000 for regular transportation. This has nothing to do with late start. This is just the costs of maintaining a status quo transportation system based upon the annual increases in our transportation contract. Special ed transportation is up $56,000. And that's a combination of changes within the needs for special ed transportation and the annual increases in our contract for special ed. Our special ed tuitions are up $34,484. And then athletics brings us to another structural deficit, which I've been able to actually witness, because I was here for the closeout of the prior fiscal year and the beginning of this fiscal year. So one of the things that I was handed when I arrived was a bunch of unpaid bills for athletics, which I paid. And then I was told, okay, you have to, you have to provide $25,000 of what was actually called seed money into the athletic program to get them started this year. So what I realized was the athletic budget in no way represents what the actual costs of running the athletic program are. Overall, we've been able to figure out that our athletic program is about a half a million dollars. And so the amount that we've been budgeting for that is a tiny, tiny, tiny fraction of the overall program. If you actually add up the costs of those sort of unpaid bills that traditionally end up in central office at the end of the year, after the boosters have done what they can do to pay bills, and the athletic director has spent the $25,000 seed money, you're left with about a $47,000 structural deficit. So again, I think if we're going to create a realistic and transparent budget, level services should say, we aren't not going to go looking to the superintendent at the end of the year to close out the bills. We're going to actually budget athletics for what it is. And even that doesn't, I mean, this still takes into account extensive fundraising from boosters, but we know now what's realistic to expect from boosters. And when we give you the final budget document, you'll see an athletic budget that shows what we're asking for in the appropriation and what we're asking different booster clubs to raise towards individual sports. Another area that's in deficit, structural deficit, is extraordinary maintenance. The amount in the current budget for extraordinary maintenance is zero. So I get calls all the time like, okay, so the pipes are frozen at Ryan Road School, and there's no money in my account. What do you want me to do? And I have to say, well, we can't let the kids freeze, so go ahead and fix the heaters. And then it's up to Ms. Walzak and I to identify funding sources. In reality, putting $50,000 for six buildings for extraordinary maintenance is probably in itself a structural deficit. It probably underestimates what we need. But I think as we develop this new process that I'm going to be recommending to you, we need to at least start by budgeting something for extraordinary maintenance. And I think there's very little chance that we'll fail to run into $50,000 worth of unexpected repairs over the course of the next year. And then another item which has to be included in a level service budget that's new is sick leave buyback. As you know, from changes to Schedule 19, that was included as a cost to the district for the first time this year and will be in next year. We're budgeting this based upon the number of people who submitted their retirement paperwork by the deadline that we know of. There's a possibility that some people might have submitted their paperwork by the deadline to the wrong person, so that may actually be a little bit higher than that. But we think that's, I think that's pretty close to the number. And then other fixed cost increases from a number of small accounts account for another So level service budget really needs to have about one and a half million dollars. Now, remember, I said 2.75 was about $725,000. So we're over about twice as much as what we should be to get to level services. So to answer the question, which I couldn't answer at the last meeting, can we fit the $93,000 for early start at the high school in on top of a level services budget? The answer is no. So this next page is some better news. And this, this is something that our financial administrator really needs to be praised for, because if it wasn't for this page, we would be in very deep trouble right now. One of the things that she was able to find is that the current budget overestimates salary, salaries for our employees by about $715,000. That excess is due in part to some turnover that we've had through the year, but the largest part of it is due to a quirk with Munis and the way ESP salaries are calculated, which essentially ended up in us budgeting for days that ESPs are not going to work. So we're able to use that excess in the salary accounts against the 1.5 million, which we need to do, because we're over the 2.75 limit. However, that's a one-time savings. The budget that I'm going to present to you may include some overages in expense accounts when we get to the end of the year with transition and everything, but we're not going to build in $715,000 more than we need. We won't be able to do that again in the prior year. We won't be able to do that again in the prior year. I guess what I'm, I mean, in the next year is what I'm saying. Also, we have reductions in unemployment expenses because if the budget that we're going to be proposing is actually approved, there will be minimal cuts. And we have some people who are currently receiving unemployment, who are coming off of their eligibility for unemployment. So, we think we can reduce that account by $75,000. However, with that, one of the decisions we made as a team is this assumes that any of the unemployment expenses related to implementing a late start have to also be covered by further cuts within the budget. Is that clear?
No.
Okay, so, what, what that says is if we have to lay off three teachers at the high school, we have to lay off another one point, however many, teachers at the high school in order to pay for their unemployment benefits. So, that's good news. So, now I have one more piece of slightly worse news. We also have to take into account revenue reductions because, as you know, although the local appropriation is the lion's share of our budget, it's not the whole thing. A lot of our budget is financed by grants and other finance programs. And in this year's 9C cuts, the kindergarten quality grant was cut by about $20,000. That's a deficit that came to us a few weeks ago. Will, will be in this year's budget and we're planning on it being in next year's budget as well. Also, our circuit breaker claim is reduced. Circuit breaker is a reimbursement program, so in this year, we receive the money based on last year's claim. And we have a system, which I think is very prudent in Northampton, of spending the money you receive in the current year in the next year's fiscal cycle. So, really, that, what we're saying is the money we got this year based on last year's expenses is less, so we'll be budgeting less of that to be spent next year. And that's a good thing because it means that our costs, the, or the number of students who reach the threshold for circuit breaker is, was reduced, which means there was a cost savings in special education. But then, the bad news is if your, if your costs go down, the reimbursement that you get for those costs goes down too. They don't occur in the same year, so it's not, so we have to account for $78,606, I'm sorry, seven, yeah, $78,616 in lost revenue to get to level service budget. So, mathematically, this is awkward because I'm kind of changing signs and going back and forth, but if you follow me, our initial, initial figure for the fixed cost increases was $1,471,839. We had the cost savings of $790,553, which gives us, you know, a true cost of level service budget of $681,268. That's 2.6%. And if that's, was the only thing we had to say, then we'd say, okay, now we've got a little bit of money for late start. Not a lot, but we have everything covered and we have something we could put towards that. However, you have to add in the lost revenue because we also have to make up for that in the budget to get to level services. So, when you add that $78,613 on, the true amount we need for level services budget is $759,899, which is over 2.75% cap. So, you know, this whole thing, if you can just sort of follow these three slides and this math problem on there, kind of give you an insight into the emotional roller curve, coaster ride that I've been on with this whole budget. You know, at first, it looked like disaster, and then it looked like, oh, we, we're going to be fine. In fact, maybe we'll solve the late start problem, you know? And then it was, then it looked like, no, we wouldn't. And, and then, one of the things that, that we began to look at is, okay, we have to, we have to budget not only for the current year, but we have to have an eye to the future because we have to get our choices right now because every choice compounds with increases in future years. So, we tried to do some projections based upon our fixed cost increases, which we now knew. We knew the cost of our wages. It's already over the 2.75%, and that goes back to the information that we provided at the last school committee meeting. We've got about 81% of our teachers still stepping. The amount between the steps is about 5%, which means for those teachers, the wage increase is really the 5% plus the COLA, which is 6%. Now, there are some, there's a other 19% of teachers who aren't stepping, who are only getting the COLA, but overall, you're looking at about 4% wage inflation, just in that one piece of the budget, which accounts for 80% of the budget. And so, when you are trying to fit 4% increases into 2.75% budget caps, you realize that you're going to run out of money pretty fast. So, we started to look at the future. So, this, this plan here looked at what if we just implemented a pay-as-you-go system and said, we can't do anything except address fixed cost increases for the next several budget cycles? The green figure there represents the amount of money that we receive from school choice, from circuit breaker, and from some other reimbursement programs, but those are the two main ones. And you, as I said, the, the tradition, and it's a good one, is that you use this year's money to pay next, next year's bills. So, we're going to build, we're going to give you a budget that has about $1.5 million worth of choice and circuit breaker in it for next year. We assume we're going to receive that same amount next year, but if you, you do that, realize there's a little bit of a gap that's missing in next year's budget. It's about $34,000 short. So, what can you do? You could either do a cut for $34,000, or you could sort of break that budgeting discipline, which I think is good, and I'm not necessarily recommending we do, but it's a possibility I need to put before you, of spending some of the money we receive next year in next year's budget. If we did that, that would cover the $34,000 deficit, and you see, you play that out to the next year, the deficit gets a little bit bigger. If you get to 2018, I think we're in a critical decision because now we're spending a lot of the money that we're receiving in the year, in the same year that it comes in. And if you get, when you get to 2019, if you spend all the money that you have left from the prior year and all the money you receive in the current year, you're still needing to do a $452,000 budget cut in order to make that year work. Which is why I've said this has to be a pay-as-you-go plan. I'm not saying this is even good, but I'm saying in order to get to 2019 without having devastating cuts, you would have to break that budget discipline and we'd still end up with that kind of a cut in that year. We may, I mean, in reality, the decision year may be 2017. We may decide then, it's better to do some preemptive cutting so that the cut in 2019 isn't $400,000, but that, that's something that's very much on my mind, and I'd like to be on your mind as we look at these budgets. So, the next scenario we looked at, and this gets kind of to my emotional roller coaster, is, well, what if we tried not to just maintain status quo, but do something? And what if we earmarked $100,000 per year for district improvements, which is roughly about the amount of a late start? That could be first year's improvement. And at this point, I was thinking, surely this is going to work. This is about a quarter of 1% of the budget. You've got to be able to find a quarter of 1% somewhere. But if you add that $100,000 on top of the fixed cost, you see how it changes the projection. Our decision year is definitely 2017 because there, we're using up $638,000 of the funds we're receiving in the same year we get them. And we're basically spending it all in 2018. And then, when you get to 2019, you're about one and a half million dollars short. That's just $100,000 a year to try to do something different. So, third scenario we looked at is, okay, neither one of those looks that great. What if we tried to extend stability within the district by trying to really work hard on revenue? And the goal we had was, could we get it out to the end of 2019 without having any kind of real need for significant cuts? In order to do that, we figured we would have to add 10 choice seats next year and five additional seats every year thereafter. If we do that, you see, we kind of build reserves for the first three years and then spend them as the wages catch up to us and the utilities catch up to us in the out years, and we still end up with a deficit in 2019, but it's, it's a, it's a minor deficit. So, the story that all these graphs tell is there's not extra money in the budget. And if we don't plan carefully now, we're going to be in trouble in a very few years. So, getting to that meeting on Tuesday that I referenced, one of the things I did, like is typical in a budget process, is I asked the administrators to bring to me what they felt they really needed in order to improve their schools. So, this is, I did end up showing them these charts, but this is prior to them seeing any of these charts. So, this is what they, they came up with. There's $621,000 worth of requests from administrators, none of which are things that I would consider to be frivolous. The first one, $85,000, this is just so that we could have a plan to replace our technology on a five-year cycle, which is a typical thing that you would have in a school district, but we don't have here. In order to do it, we'd have to add that much money to the budget. And you can see that all up and down the line, the, the items are very reasonable things. One, one thing I'll point out is the foreign language teacher at the high school. This was requested because sometimes we can't run enough sections to give foreign languages to all the kids who want to have it. So, it was just a request, not to create anything new, but to not turn kids away from courses that are in the catalog where kids can't get into because they're oversubscribed. The one thing that is, I collapsed a bunch of these things, as you can imagine, they were items that occurred on, on many administrators' lists. And so, one that's a little bit unusual that I'll just point out to you is clerical slash lunch support. Those are really two different kinds of things. One, the, the majority of that was increased clerical support that was requested by the elementary principals because when ETLs or team leaders were limited at the, eliminated at the elementary level, the school secretaries ended up picking up a lot of the work that the team leaders used to do. And so, principals are saying, now they're spending all their time on special ed, I'm kind of not getting my work done. And then, the other one was for lunch support. In order to provide coverage in the cafeterias and at lunch recess, that in, in this district is a separate position because in most, most of the levels, teachers don't have duties. So, all the administrators' budget requests came up $621,000. Then I showed them the charts, and I said, okay, we're in the pay-as-you-go era, so we can do anything that's on this list that you want to do, but you have to come up with an equal number of cuts somewhere else. So, this is what we were able to get to at the end of the day. The, the real, I think, strongest desire on part of the elementary principals was to have tiered support staff. This year, you know, we put in a half-time tiered support person at each of the elementary schools. They feel that position is very helpful, both with students who are having academic challenges and students who are having behavioral challenges. But the problem is, those kids don't schedule their challenges to occur on the day when the support person's there. So, so, they said, if we can do anything, that's what we need to have. So, after many hours of discussion, they were able to identify an equal number of reductions on the right-hand side to pay for the increases that they wanted on the, on the other side. These, because these cuts, in many cases, are due to changes that are happening within special education programs, that I can't really talk about at too level, too great of a level of detail because many times, these are positions that are tied to individual students, and if I say too much, there's a strong danger of me, you know, revealing something about the kid. But I, we have an opportunity to make some changes this year based on some movement within programs, and the, the principal's request, which I recommend, which I will recommend to you, is that we, you take advantage of those opportunities we have now for cost reductions in some areas to pay for cost increases in some other areas that they. So, this is the disposition of each of those requests. You can see that if we weren't able to figure out a way to pay for the requests, they ended up getting the red line through them. Some of them were funded in part by restructuring and balance eliminated, and some of them weren't funded at all. The net cost of all of the requests is zero. And the same thing has to apply to the high school. So, if we need $93,000 to begin with, plus the unemployment costs of whatever the first 93 ends up costing us, that has to come out of the high school. So, we began this by saying, before we even get started-
And just to, just to clarify, Mr. Superintendent, just for folks who may be watching, the 93 is the cost of adding, of delinking the high school busing from the three-tier system and creating a separate tier?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, we said, before we even start to talk about courses, we need to have a fair and objective methodology that we're using because whatever the list is, people want to know, how did you come up with these cuts? Why was it these ones and not others? So, our first criteria was if a course was required for graduation or college applications, it was maintained. And that may sound a little bit awkward, but I'll just explain why we added college applications. One of the things that we thought about very briefly was we could just eliminate foreign language. It's not required for graduation for any of our students because it's not been adopted as a graduation requirement, but that will very significantly impact the ability of our students to apply and be accepted at colleges. So, we quickly said, okay, we need to, we need to save foreign language, even, even though it's not strictly speaking a graduation requirement. If a course was a graduation requirement, then we, it was safe because you can't eliminate courses that you're saying students must take in order to get a diploma. Next, we wanted to maintain course options for diverse learners, so at every level, we wanted to have a variety of levels of challenge so that there was more than one level available at each grade level and subject. And then, we looked at current enrollment by class, teacher, and department to identify the areas of least impact. Because every cut really has three impacts. First, there's the cut itself. Then, there's the unemployment associated with that cut. And then, there's, you have to put the kids somewhere. So, in order to remediate that last effect as best as possible, you have to cut your smallest classes. That means you have fewer kids you have to put into other classes to increase their class size. And then, one of the things that became clear to us when we started looking at voting charts is the year-long AP classes are a very inefficient use of teacher resources. Because if you have a year-long class that has 25 students, it's essentially, you shouldn't be counting those as 25 students, it's as if the teacher has 12 and a half students each semester because you're still using up two blocks of that, that teacher's availability to teach. So, that made a lot of the AP classes come out as low-impact classes in terms of the amount of students that would have to be displaced. And then, we said, we'd like to give you two versions to consider. One, shelters programs that have been approved and supported in prior year's overrides. This is not cutting that we're doing in order to, to address any kind of a budgetary catastrophe. This is cutting that we're doing in order to try to create a new program. And I think respectfully, it would tarnish the credibility of the committee to cut programs that taxpayers have said, please raise my taxes in order to have. So, we said, let's try that. And then, another, another theory we had on this as well, you know, two and a half overrides are really only able to direct money for the first year, so maybe we should put all programs on the table and let you see what that would be like. So, that was the methodology, and I'll share the results. So, this first one is the cut list where arts and sports are sheltered. First cut is a cappella. That's an elimination. Now, that may seem like inconsistent with me saying that those overrides are sheltered, but that class still ends up on the list because what happened in last budget cycle, last fiscal year, is after the positions were restored, I don't know if it was last year's budget cycle, but I know that last year, we added an additional class to one teacher's position, which was over and above the amount that was brought back by the override. So, that is an art cut, but it wasn't one of the arts cuts that was, one of the arts classes that was targeted in the override. Next, AP calculus would be reduced from two sections to one section. AP chemistry would be reduced from two sections to one section. AP economics would be reduced from two sections to one section. AP European history would be offered every other year instead of on a yearly basis. AP language would be reduced from six sections to three sections. AP literature would be reduced from four sections to two sections. AP psychology would be reduced from two sections to one section. AP statistics would be reduced from two sections to one section. AP US history, like Euro, European history, would be offered every other year. Honors US history would be reduced from four sections to two sections. Sociology would be reduced from three sections to two sections. And sophomore honors English would be reduced from five sections to four sections. One of the consequences of this that I would just like to bring to your attention is, we would no longer be able to offer all kids who want to have AP classes, the classes that they would like to take. So, we'd have to create a system to eliminate kids from the classes. We'd probably, it would probably be a combination of preference for upperclassmen, prerequisite courses, and lottery. And I do think that would leave many students and parents feeling very frustrated. So, the next cut list holds no program harmless and just says, okay, going from least impact to most impact. Again, a cappella is at the top of the list. This is a course that currently has 15 students and is limited in its ability to accept more students. Songwriting would be eliminated. Family and consumer science would be reduced from three sections to two sections. American popular music would be eliminated. Music theory would be eliminated. Acting seminar would be eliminated. Acting and directing workshop would be eliminated. Multimedia production would be eliminated. Honors art would be reduced from four sections to two section. Freshman athletics and JV teams would be eliminated. Ultimate frisbee would be eliminated. This, yes?
So, when we say cut list, these are, this would be everything that would be cut in order to make a certain amount of money, or these are things that could be cut and you'd have to figure out how much money?
These are everything that would need to be cut. You could do-
To make, to make how many dollars?
To, it's about $93,000 for the delinking of the high school tier, plus another $48,000 to pay for unemployment costs. And could mix and match, but if you were to do that, you would have to refigure. List A works as a, as a complete set, if you will. List B works as a complete set. If you go back and forth, then we'd have to do some refiguring. In this list, you'll notice there are a lot more eliminations. In the first list, we're mainly reducing sections. This is because many of the courses are singletons that are only taught by the person who would have to be eliminated. So, I just want to, just want to close with a few thoughts. I hope you know that, as was said earlier tonight, I'm not a denier or disbeliever in the benefits of a late start. I really thought at one point in this budget process that we were going to be able to do it, when I realized it was going to be essentially one quarter of 1% of the school budget. But then, when I played out one quarter of 1% on top of the fact that we don't have any flexibility due to the fact that our costs are increasing faster than our cap, that we got to this point. And another thing is, one, an email I got today from someone who I really respect, although I have differences of opinions on, about some things, said, "I, I hate the way that the arts are being played off and pitted against late start." And I hope you see that I'm not here advocating for arts versus late start, or AP versus late start. What I'm saying is, the conclusion of all this research into both the head counts, the hub systems, and the budget projections is, we'd like to do three things, and we can only afford two. We can do a world-class AP program. We can do a vibrant arts and athletic program. We can do late start. You can have any two of those that you want. You can't have all three. It could be late start and AP. It could be late start and art. It could be art and AP. And I think that at this point, I have to give you my- And I think that at this point, I have to give you my recommendation as superintendent. I feel that the benefits of a late start notwithstanding, these cuts would be devastating to students. Some kids come to school only because of the programs that are on that list right now. And there are many students who need to be challenged by the courses that are on the other list. I don't think it's educationally responsible for me to recommend either of those cut lists to you. So at this point, I think the thing that I would recommend has to go is the late start. But I guess what we have to do, the direction I need from you at this point, is we'll be preparing budget books for you to vote on. And we need to know whether the budget books should include programs as they currently stand with the no-cost changes that the administrators have recommended. That's, you know, status quo essentially. Would you like a budget book that includes the cuts to AP primarily to implement a late start? Or would you like a budget book that includes cuts to arts to implement a late start?
Superintendent, if you want to trip here, we can open the floor to questions and the presentation.
So I don't know if Principal Lombardi or Superintendent would address this, but I know something I've heard from the community is with respect to cutting AP program classes is, oh, well, they can take classes at Smith. Could you explain to people the problems, once we change to late start, that the availability of classes might not be the same? And I don't, in fact, myself, I'm not sure. I know for AP classes, if they pass the AP exam, they'll receive credit for college.
Yes.
But that's not true necessarily of Smith College classes that they teach.
Yes, Smith College is Smith College. That's separate.
But they don't grant credit necessarily?
They get credit, but it's not for another, it's not dual enrollment. So if you do a dual enrollment, for example, at HCC or GCC, that's, you get high school credit in college. Smith, as far as I know, is not a guarantee that that counts toward college.
Right.
The AP, if you take an AP class and you get a certain score, and the college you go to chooses to, you then might not have to, they'll count that, and you might not have to take a biology or, and you can go to the next level. That's a changing landscape, but that's in theory where it is. We have policies about, school committee-approved policies about students accessing Smith College. Juniors can access one, one a semester, and seniors two. Also, the problem is, is if you take off all those APs, you know, that's a guaranteed source. You know, we have this many sections. You know, students every year trying, vying to get into Smith College, there's no guarantee. What happens is they choose, I want to take these classes at Smith. They only know until the following fall or the spring semester, when they show up at their instructor's classroom, if this instructor, if there's room in there for them to get enrolled. It's kind of a shot, a shot in the dark. Many times they get in, also many times they don't. And then what would happen, those students then who would maybe gamble thinking to get a Smith College class, if they don't get that, they have to default back to something at the high school. And part of our dilemma is, we can't really hold a class for those students because that might mean pushing out a student that wants to stay at that class in the high school.
Yeah, yeah, because I feel like there might be a mistaken impression in the community that this is kind of a redundancy. Like, oh, well, they can access, and I don't think that is the case.
And I think this, I think that, you know, it's a, I think the number is like 50, 60 students taking Smith classes. You know, with that type of cut, I'm not sure if our relationship with Smith would really, if it's built on, you know, 100, I mean, I think that might be kind of, we're thin a little. You know, I think, I'm not sure if they could handle that capacity if our kids were trying to go into AP biologies or AP, you know, foreign language or things like that.
Thanks.
If any of you are interested in the committee, I can certainly say a word or two about my Smith courses in high schools. I don't know.
Mrs. Minnick?
First of all, I want to thank the superintendent and Ms. Walzak for Goman's work and apparently the rest of the alt team for participating in a marathon day of budget planning. And for the clarity and thoughtfulness of your budget and your recommendation. I also want to commend you for looking at the things that have been historically underfunded. You know why we underfunded them. I mean, we got to a point where we said, we have to cut X, so we're going to cut it out of maintenance, we're going to cut it out of supplies, and we're, so that's why it looks like that. But it was irresponsible of us to do it. Then again, with your back against the wall, sometimes you make some bad decisions. So there we are. But I appreciate that you found those things, that you noticed those things, and that you've put them back in at the level at which they should be funded. And who knows where we'll end up, you know, in April, they may be slashed again, or at least, you know, partly, partly have amputations if they haven't been completely eliminated. But the fact of the matter is that you found those things and that you are suggesting to us, you're asking us to be responsible and to fund the district at the level that needs to be funded to operate the way it should be. So I really want to thank you for doing that, for seeing it, and for bringing it to us in that manner. And I don't remember now what I was going to say of any consequence, except that I wanted to thank you for the hard work that you, I mean, I think that, I think it's obvious. We've gotten a lot of messages. I finally have gotten some email messages. Some of my colleagues have been getting them for a week or more. I got a flurry of them in the last day and a half. But it's true, people who have supported the late start time can't support these kinds of cuts. And I think we heard that this evening from the, you know, from some of the speakers during public session. So I mean, I think, I think you have done an excellent job of identifying what this would actually cost the district. I can only hope, I'm also very concerned by your analysis of what things look like going forward for the next foreseeable, you know, three to five years. I think we can only hope that some of the comments that were made to the commission about the foundation funding formula will bear fruit, so that, you know, that they will carry some weight with them, that we will see more money from the state. But I, based on my personal experience, I wouldn't count on that. We can't count on that. So again, I have to say, while it's distasteful, and I'm glad that you have identified what the future looks like so that we know where we're going there. But anyway, it's, my, I think in three or four years of '25, we've had a budget season where we felt like we could actually do something, and we thought about, was there a program we wanted to add? And this looks like this is another one of the other kind of budget seasons where even with the generosity of our community, we're sitting here looking at, what are we going to have to cut to make things work? Just to provide the, not what we would say was the education that we really want to offer for our students, not that we want, this is not the high-quality, this is a quality education. This is not substandard education, but it's definitely not the kind of education that we would hope to provide for the students in Northampton. And the final thing that I would say, now, I forgot that one again, too. Never mind. I'll come up with it, and I'll let somebody else talk.
Mr. Meyer?
So my first question is that the 2.9 number, now, last year, the budget grew by 3.35%, appropriation grew by 3.35%. And I'm just wondering, is the fiscal situation of the city that much worse that we're receiving $123,000 less? It's, you know, and there may be, right, again, looking to move fiscal stability farther out into the future, but I just, you know, that's my first, and I don't know whether you want me to-
I'll address it. I'll address it. And I'll begin by saying, by adding to what Mrs. Minnick said, and to compliment and to thank the superintendent and the business administrator, because essentially, the stability plan in many ways mirrors the stability plan that we've created at the city level, which is the very exact same thing happening if you look at the larger city budget. You know, we've put away the savings from the override, and we're trying to live off it as long as we can. But then we reach a point in 2020 where we go into the red. And so the red that you're seeing on the city budget is the same red, you know, you're seeing as part of the school budget, which is obviously, you know, 50-plus percent of the overall city budget. So the issue that we're waiting for, in the 2.75, we have scaled back where we were last year, you know, when we gave the 3%, you know, the 3%-
3.35.
Exactly, exactly. Part of that's based on wage growth in this final year of some contracts. I know you're familiar with the final year of the NACE contract, and it mirrors a lot of the same across the rest of the city. And the other issue is Governor Baker, you know, has just come into office, and much like described, the superintendent has described, you know, he's projecting that there's a $1.6 billion structural deficit in the state budget, almost for the same thing, that programs that there were no monies for, were filled in with one-time monies, or they were filled in with stimulus monies. There wasn't actually truth in budgeting in a lot of those accounts. And he's taking the position that he's not going to do that anymore. And so we've already seen mid-year the cuts to our funding for the kindergarten program. And there are actually some other cuts which we, which we're not quite sure how they're going to play out, but charter school reimbursement, there was a cut to that. And that hasn't been fully funded in many years, and we suspect it won't be funded. So we're waiting right now, we're showing right now on the city side, without two of our big numbers coming in yet, we're looking at, you know, about a half a million dollars deficit that we're working with. We're waiting for health insurance, which we'll get the numbers next week. The GIC will take its vote. That is a, that's a large line item, that's $10 million of our budget. The GIC is part of Governor Baker's structural deficit. One of the first things they told him when he came into office is, you know, we've got about a $200,000-plus structural deficit in the GIC that has to be fixed. And it's attributable to a lot of different things, people joining mid-budget year and that not being budgeted for. And then they've also got some challenges in just health insurance rates coming in historically higher than they have in the past. So that's going to be a big number. And then local aid, the governor, Governor Baker, will release his budget, and that's actually going to be illuminating for both city and school because we're going to get our first look at, including some of the projections on the cherry sheet that'll come along with that for state aid, for chapter 70 aid, for other revenues. So we're really, despite what he said as a candidate, which was he was going to increase local aid and try to increase it by the amount of growth in revenues in the state, obviously, he's now run into this structural deficit that he's going to have to figure out how to maintain. So we're, we're assuming level-funded local aid may be what occurs, given the deficit that he's facing. So those are the two big, and then chapter 70, again, $25 increase per year. MMA has been lobbying to raise that to $100 per child. But again, given the deficit he's talking about, this may not be the year that that happens. So we may have a better picture of it this time next week when we get those, when we get the governor's budget, when we get the GIC numbers, whether we have any additional flexibility. But I really, we really have to be this conservative in terms of our projection.
Right. I mean, I understand that the factors are outside of your control-
Exactly.
-to a large extent, but it's just in terms of our, as a committee, budgeting, it's obviously better for us to have a number that doesn't vary by, because, you know, most people might say, oh, a few tenths of a percent, but that's positions.
Exactly.
But the other question I would have is, the ESP's budgeting issue, was that, did that happen one time in the last fiscal year, or is this something that you've seen going back?
I believe it's been happening for at least a couple of years. In discussion with the city CFO, it appeared to explain some of the budget balances in past years, too, that were identified late in the payroll cycle.
Because I guess what I would ask the superintendent and the business manager is that, that makes me really concerned because I don't feel good about this money. I mean, this is the money that you find under your mattress to pay the rent, but it only is good for that month. In the next month, you're not making the money and salary to pay the rent. That's right. So I guess this puts us, as a school department, in a much worse situation going forward. And I would be interested to see, maybe at the next meeting, some projections on what do we do to cure a $715,000 deficit? Because that sounds like cuts to me. It's well in excess of even a 3.35%. And the last question is just more of a, just informational, just in terms of the salary, the salary increase to $810,000, I'd just be curious if, or if you could give me the information on how that was constructed? What, you know, what were the components? Just because looking back to information that I had when we were negotiating our last three-year agreement, we had 262 employees in Unit A, 119 on steps, 143 off steps. So that's only 45% at that point. So now, clearly, we've had a number of retirements, so we've moved a lot more people on steps. But I just want to look in turn, I want to look at the numbers because the idea is that when people move off steps, yes, they do get that 4.5%, but you're hoping that you're moving from top step to a mid-career hire. And so I'd just be curious as to what the hiring history, and just maybe look at the roster of Unit A to see where they are today.
The process to come up with the numbers going into FY '16 actually involved physically, manually touching every employee and looking at the calculation?
And that's what I, that's what I did. Actually, when I built my budget numbers, I asked Human Resources for their full roster, and I put every salary, and I built that going forward. So I'd just be curious, I mean, if I could just get those numbers, again, as a member of the negotiating committee, it's critical for me to have that information as we go into a year where we're going to open negotiations, so.
I guess the question I would ask, and we can talk about it, is if the numbers were coming out of the payroll system with, from Human Resources, you may have had that same issue with the ESPs?
Oh, this was, this was Unit A. So I'm only talking about-
Just Unit A.
Yeah, I had the other information, but I, since the bulk of our salaries are paid to Unit A, I used Unit A and built that out as the cost, and then added an additional factor for the other units. But I'm just, again, not, you know, it's not going to make a difference in terms of the budget, but just going forward with payroll costs, I'd just be really interested in having that information.
Mrs. Minnick?
Something he said reminded me of what the other thing I was going to say was, and I usually say this for next month when we discuss school choice. But in view of the fact that the superintendent was talking about his stabilization and using school choice funds as a large portion of that, I thought I would go ahead and say it this year, or this month, which is when the state first came up with the concept of school choice, and so, most of you have heard me say this before, Laura, this is something new, that we, when the state first came out with this, we took that money, and it was like, wow, we've got extra money, and we put it aside, and we spent $200,000 on textbooks, or we spent $300,000 on computer stuff. It was for one-time expenses that were extraordinary, out of the mainstream. Over the years, we were very careful for a long time to protect that money because, to some extent, it's an unpredictable income stream. Now, once you have students that you've accepted under school choice, they have the right to remain in your district for, until they graduate. And so it's, as long as we're doing a good job, we might reasonably expect that they will stay with us, and we rely on that, on that funding, we calculate those funds. However, they could all choose next year to go someplace else, which, if you eliminate all the AP classes or all the arts programs, I guess, is, some of them will leave. But that aside, I think the point I'm trying to make is that we protected that money and used it for one-time luxury purchases for a long time. And then we slowly got into a position where we needed to be using some of it, and then a little bit more of it. And it got into our budget. We were trying not to actually pay teachers with it, but to use it for other expenses so that it, but eventually, it got applied to teacher salaries. Now, when you have a teacher, that's a recurring expense unless you eliminate that section, that position, that person. So eventually, we have gotten ourselves into the point where we are using school choice funding that comes in this year to pay for things that are recurring expenses in our budget for next- in our budget for next year. If you start using the money that comes in this year to pay for recurring expenses in this year and you have nothing set aside for next year, that's the point he was trying to make. School choice is, we have, we have gone from using it as a bonus, an end of your bonus from your boss, to using it as part of ours, our, our everyday budget. We rely on that funding now. And if it were to change even, you know, only a small percentage, it would be devastating to our district. And so, I, I mean, I just, I just wanted to say that it's been a, it's a concern for me as we've moved gradually from using it for one-time expenses to using it for regular.
So, you could build a budget with, you know, using one point five, which is what you got last year, but then you get to the end of the year and you're only getting one point three and then you're.
Yeah.
And you've got a two hundred thousand dollar hole with two or three months left in this fiscal year.
So, not only, so not only are you using the money before you actually even get it or what, or, yeah. It's, so anyway, it's very frightening. I, that was not a suggestion for what we would do, I'm just making a comment, that it's very unnerving to me to see that we have become dependent on that funding and now we may actually be using it in current year, you know.
And that, that would occur, you sort of turned that corner at the two thousand seventeen to two thousand and eighteen on your charts, that's when you would sort of slowly flip to that.
That's correct.
Current year. So, that's going to be a real decision point in terms of.
I, I guess I would suggest that the school committee look at ways of avoiding that outcome.
I just want to say that, I mean, the fist, the, the projections we've been using every year, we're reevaluating them. So, we were, you know, the, the first year of the override, we infused a lot of money into the schools. Year two, we, um, you know, we tried to be conservative, we then came back and added some additional funds, but we really feel like we have to take the same approach, be more conservative now because, you know, if you grow, that's just, that, that growth, it just becomes exponential and you just eat up that, that stability fund that much faster. So, you know, I realize two point seven five is, feels like it's, it's, um, it's limiting and it's conservative, but, you know, we can only raise taxes two and a half percent. So, that's on, you know, that's on two point five percent that we're allowed to raise revenues every year and we're saying, raise the budget two point seven five, so.
Which begs the question, if the figures are correct on salary increases, we've already got a disconnect with nothing else factored in.
Yeah.
We can't afford to pay, we can't afford to honor the contractual increases that we've already.
We can this year.
Well, we can this year, we can afford to continue honoring them, but it will be at the cost of something else, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, at, we don't get enough money to, it, at a two point seven five percent increase, it's not enough to cover.
Yeah.
Which is, which is, you know, when you're, when you're, you've, you've heard this said as well, but when the district, if, if you were running this like a business, I mean, eighty percent of our costs are in personnel. We've only got twenty percent that we can even play with, even if we did want to cut maintenance and supplies, that's the only, the rest of it is personnel and when you cut a person, then you have the unemployment costs that go with it. It's just, this just becomes so frustrating, depressing.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, so I'd like to, uh, put my two cents. I think what the question you asked, you'd like to have an answer to is sort of what to do for the next meeting, the next presentation. I would, I think, um, from my perspective, the thing to do is to do, um, essentially to flesh out the level service budget and, um, and then do district-wide cuts in case we actually have to do that, to have, you know, start, start working on that plan. If, um, you know, if, because, you know, the things you read in the newspaper about how, what is the mass taxpayer saying that Charlie Baker underestimated his deficit by a hundred percent? Um, and, and, you know, just really grim sort of things where, you know, there's going to, you know, it doesn't seem like it's likely to go up, but if it's going to go anywhere different, it seems like the amounts would be going down. So, I, I would think a level service budget and then, um, right, and then, and then, and then just begin at least to sort of the same kind of thinking that you did with what would happen if you had a cost of additional transportation costs, but what would happen if we simply don't have enough money for the level service? Where would we start? How, you know, what's the, at least a, if not specifics of cuts, at least the methodology and the kind of thought process, because I think, um, well, again, I think it's not something to rush into.
So, can I ask you a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So, the, the only amount that we wouldn't be able to cover without, uh, breaking the past tradition on the use of choice would be thirty-four thousand. So, are you asking, in this, in the FY sixteen year, are you asking for thirty-five, thirty-four thousand dollars worth of district-wide cuts?
Because that's the amount over the two point seven five?
Yes.
Um, right. Or, and, and like I said, maybe not the specifics, but just sort of how, you know, sort of the methodology, how we would go about looking at it, because it, it's sort of simple enough when to look at the high school because then you're really only talking classes at the high school. But when you start district-wide, it's just, just many more apples and oranges being compared, it's even more. Um, and so, to start that, and, and then I guess my thought is that it could be more than thirty-four thousand depending on, again, what comes from the state.
Mr. Ball?
Okay, um, I am looking up and I don't even know where to start with this. It's a really hard decision as far as what to cut and what not to cut. I have to keep reminding myself that, um, when the American Pediatric Association and the CDC did their studies, they said that late start of time, late start times, later start times would benefit all students. When I'm looking at the cuts that were presented tonight and, you know, plate A or plate B, um, plate A is all the arts, or is that B, whatever, but, okay, plate B is the arts, okay. Well, that once again affects every student. So, the late start time affects every student, the arts affects every student, and the AP program does not. The AP program, all the way up and through, I'm listening to differentiated instruction, that's the big thing right now. Um, you know, maybe Smith College will take on more classes, maybe they won't. I don't think it's something that we need to rely on, but I do think that we need to do what's going to benefit all students or the most students. And I, and I don't, I mean, if the kids are smart, then they're smart. And yes, they can be challenged, um, I mean, my daughter's having that issue right now of differentiation and I'm watching it in the middle school here and asking questions and seeing how it's working. And I don't understand why that we have, when we have such talented teachers, if that's what we need to do, why we can't, and we're not talking about eliminating any of the programs also, so why we can't just, um, do more differentiation within instruction, within what we already have, like, I don't know if you have level ones or whatever, I don't know how that, if that even does it anymore, just honors or not. Um, but maybe we need to look back at, you know, something, some mixed classes. So, um, and I'm also not sure if the only reason that the AP honors classes, if it's for knowledge that these kids are questing, or is it just going to look good on their, um, college application? Um, because if they were to take a class, um, whether they took an AP class or not, I, I think you could take AP testing if you have the equivalent education of it, whether or not you took AP or whether you took it through Smith College. I think that you can still, if you took it through Smith College, you have the knowledge to be able to take the AP test. So, anyway, I just, that's my two cents is, is that which affects everybody. And, um, I mean, I, I have a lot of research that I've looked at to really weigh out the late start time because I'd like to be able to say, you know what, why don't we just put that on the back burner? But that affects every student. And I'd like it to be equal for all students. And so, that's what I have to say.
Um, Ms. Henderson, I think Principal Ombro already else.
Sure, let her speak first, because.
Principal?
Yeah, I would like to say, um, it was a horrible day when we had to sit down and make these cuts and think about these cuts. Um, I think that, um, this is all about students. And, um, whether, whether it's, um, list one, list two, list there, list B, whatever, it does impact all our students. Because you're taking, North Hampton, one of the things about North Hampton, if you think about what we stand for, um, you walk in each building, you see the arts. So, we stand for arts. And the other day when I was coming into, um, the building on Monday, I was away last week and I was, um, you know, really bothered when I knew that, um, about these potential cuts, where I saw the email, get ready for the discussion, cut based on, on the last school committee meeting, you know, listening to the radio, and as I'm listening to the radio, I'm hearing about the Gong Show put on by the, the, um, Art Center. I'm like, so, it's so ironic, I'm hearing about our community, this, this building a mile from the school, we're potentially going to have to deal with cutting arts. It doesn't seem to make sense. Um, I think people come to the community, community, people come to the high school for the arts. At the same time, they come for, um, the rigor, the academic rigor. And here we are, you know, less than a mile from Smith College in this, in this fantastic interaction we have with Smith College for our students to take classes there. We had a situation, um, in our biology class, the, the Smith professors rallied and sent to our biology department, not one teacher, but the department came up to help out. Um, these are things which make our school unique, these are things which draw students here. In regards to the late start, I think research shows, Phil, um, of course it helps students, it would help us if we got more sleep as adults, I think, and I think, you know, we all know that. Philosophically, myself and every teacher in the building philosophically would support a late start. That's not the question. And as Jeremy Whalen said and Dr. Provost said, it's not about a philosophical disagreement, it's about the implementation, the practicality. And I can't guarantee that every student will benefit from a late start, I don't know what their patterns will be at home or in the mornings, I don't think any of us do. The science is there, but we don't know the implementation. I do however know that cutting these classes, whether A or B, will impact students. Those students, whether they're doing it for whatever reason, it's their reason. If they want to do it for college, that's fine. If they want to do it because that, that's a passion they have, even more, so. One of the things about North Hampton which is so great is that we've taken down the, the barriers that prevent kids from getting into those classes. We don't have requirements, we don't have you have to go through a maze to get there. What we say is if you have an interest, you have a passion, you have a desire, go take that class. You got to see maybe in your freshman English class, but all of a sudden you've read a book, you saw something, you want to take a chance at an AP class and be, and, um, be challenged at that level, go ahead and take it. This will take that away because we'll have to put those structures in place. Not only will we have to put structures in there that potentially will leave kids out of those opportunities, those students, all those lists represent, um, a couple hundred kids, they will go someplace else. Not all of them will go to Smith College, they'll go back to other classes that are already high. So, classes of twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty-eight begin to go up to thirty, thirty-one. So, I would argue that those cuts do impact the classes, they impact all those classes. And, um, I think it's important to understand, these cuts will impact every student, I would say in a much more tangible way than the benefits of, perceived benefits of a late start.
That's not scientific though. I mean, scientifically, they've done research that states that this does help all students. So, I mean, I agree that most of it's your opinion, but whether or not you agree or disagree, it's actually a study done over three years of many different schools, from the University of Minnesota, that actually came up with all the data and which the American Physi- um, Pediatric Association, um, ended up calling it a pub, a public health crisis, one of the biggest ones that we can actually add, address. So, I do understand that all students are affected by the arts, but you haven't gotten me that all students, because I know students that struggle, I know students that come to school just for the arts, I know students who have a hard time getting up to go to school. If all of these kids can work on their circadian rhythm, which is actually what's been scientifically looked at and recommended, then it helps all students and not just the academically advanced students that want to challenge themselves. Because guess what? You can challenge yourself anywhere. If you're smart enough to do it, you can do it. What about the kids that struggle to get to school with, you know, and with the whole circadian rhythm and don't have the parental support? A lot of the high achieving kids do have the parental and familial support and have had it for all the years.
You know, I can't, I can't address all the specifics you said. Um, I think what we, we look at, um, all our students and I'm not sure if we break them down to the smart kids or the art kids, um, there's a lot of crossover.
Well, if, I'm not saying.
And, and I, and I think that, though the pediatrics might have said there's a state of emergency for sleep, I'd say this is a state of emergency for education. What do we stand for? What is North Hampton High School? What does the community stand for? And from a person that's come from, that's been here seven years, that's lived in the community for about twenty years, what's, North Hampton High School stood out to me is a place of opportunity for students, of all students, for rigor, for arts, for academics, for interest. And there's a lot of crossover. Last night I was at a present, presentation, um, of our, and, um, invent team, and this is a variety of students who have put together a grant through MIT, a very prestigious grant, working on developing, um, a rowing machine for, um, disabled people. You know, you take that up, and, and what was so fantastic, you're seeing these kids who love math, who love science, drawing on, that stuff starts in the classroom.
How did they get that grant?
That's a different story, hold on, let me finish.
I mean, did they do it? Because this is an example.
Let me finish.
Example, okay.
Okay. And what I'm saying is that, that starts in the classroom, that starts in the classroom of giving them the basic skills and the tools to do that, okay? A few weeks ago, I was at, um, the arts, I was at a creative, um, the, um, songwriting class, it was a class that, um, drew a variety of students, non-musicians, poetry, um, students and musicians coming together, collaborating, making music. You had mentioned soul to wit. Um, come to the high school and we have a fantastic collaboration from Lisa Leary's art class and her math on the ground floor, a whole soul to wit, um, display based on the premise of soul to wit, um, them working together, collaborating. So, this stuff, it's, it's an inter, it's an integration of the smart and, uh, they're all smart, they're all wonderful, beautiful kids, we, and it's a vibrant community. And I think anything you do takes away from that vibrancy. When you take away that column, we lose something at North Hampton High School, you take away the other column, we lose something else. And we're gutting what is really the soul of North Hampton High School. And I, and I, again, philosophically I support it, but I support Dr. Provost fully, that this is not the time to initiate, um, you know, a late start at the cost of gutting such significant course opportunities for our students. You look at where kids go to class, we had two students this year going to MIT, we've had a variety of students going to, um.
Cooper Union.
Cooper Union in our art program. So, I can point in every direction how our students, um, benefit from these programs and either one is going to hurt students.
We already have a major deficit. Can you answer my question that I asked you before though? I mean, who, who is the one, you said these students got a grant.
Yeah.
How did they get the grant? Did they do it?
They worked with a teacher to submit.
So, back to the point, then, then if they're motivated and then they're smart and they have, they want the academic rigor, they can go out and, and meet it and reach it themselves.
I'm just disagreeing, um, so I can tell you, okay? I'm sorry. I do not agree where you're coming from, I think it's educationally sound, um, to keep these programs there. I'm not denying that there is research and scientific data that shows people benefit from more sleep, of course, I'm not saying that. But, I can tell you that when students are in front of teachers of Mr. Leary's caliber, of Mr. Selfridge's caliber, and they are being challenged, that I think is scientific and they do benefit from that. And that's all I can tell you. Is it a part opinion? Sure. But I think when I see these students every day, when I walk the halls every day and I see the kids at the invent, the, um, team last night, when I see the kids in the musical in a few weeks, I see kids benefiting what is offered at the high school and I'd be remiss to say otherwise and to, um, support anything other than keeping those classes intact.
Ms. Henderson?
I got to say a few things, um, thank you. Um, I, as you know, teach in another district and we look at North Hampton, literally, I mean, I always kind of brag now, like, well, I, I live there, um, for your AP program and the arts.
Yeah.
And the AP, like, you had that grant, were part of that grant, and you have unbelievable number of students. And I would actually disagree with you here, Blue, I do think, I think the arts saves kids, I agree with you. Um, I actually think you're wrong about the AP, I, I see it saving kids too.
A lot of you do.
I see kids who are, I think, I think sometimes people think, oh, only the high achievers are AP. No, I have special ed kids in my AP, I'm sure you do too, who want that challenge, who want to go to college and want the experience. And more importantly, well, that's not more importantly, and equally important is so many low-income students want that opportunity to get that college credit. So, AP US history, they get eight credits at UMass, European history, eight credits, Spanish, eight credits for getting that, that is thousands of dollars for low-income, for any student. I, I think that it is a brave disservice to not offer that. And then my, my more really, really, so I don't want, ever want to cut the arts, I want to increase the arts, I know we can't. Um, and I would say the same about AP, I think it, it makes us strong. And I don't think anyone in this whole community would dispute the science of the late start. I think, and I don't want to judge anyone for saying it's more important than AP, and I don't want to judge people for saying that the arts and AP are more important than late start. I think we're all making a really hard decision with this trade-off. Um, and I, I think it's horrible, but a real practical thing, you said in another presentation that almost twenty-two percent of incoming ninth graders are, had not been in North Hampton Public Schools prior to that.[1761.01] prior to that. I think if we cut the arts and/or AP, that we're going to lose some of those, and we're going to lose some of those people to charter schools, and that's to me devastating.
I would also say that, what I think's important is that, one of the things that we're very proud of at the high school is our culture. And we had, we had a discussion recently about lunch, and, you know, high school lunch versus middle school lunch, and it's how kids are, and, you know, one of the things I can say that I'm most proud about, and I hope our community is, is the level of how our students interact with each other. And what I would hate to see is this, the type of list that we've given become divisive.
Yeah.
The art kids versus the smart kids. You know, the kid, these kids are saved, these ones don't need saving, because, and I, I'm hesitant, I think that's dangerous, because what we are, we are a community, we're an educational community, we are a diverse community. And one of the things I can say happens every single day at Northampton High School, this diversity comes together and it works. You know, the art kids, the smart kids, whatever label, let's not put labels, I thought we're trying to get away from labels. These kids come together and they help each other, they support each other on a daily basis. And I think, again, if we're going to talk about late start, or we're going to talk about programming, it's about making sure it programs for everybody, and it's not about to save this one particular group and let that one, they can fend for themselves. It's not that, they, it's a very cohesive supportive culture at our high school.
I'm sorry if you thought that I want anyone to fend for themselves, but I didn't see the AP as being cut, I mean eliminated, we're talking about eliminating arts. So, I just want to say that, you know, maybe more people can fit into the AP classes. We already have such a, I mean, we, we lose so many students already to other schools, I think we ought to start to look at how to get them back.
So, one of...
Got people with their hands up.
Yes, exactly, I'm trying to make sure that other people have an opportunity to speak, so, Karen?
Thank you, my comment would be a combination of what a lot of people have said, but I think there are huge trickle-down effects to cut AP program in particular. I know that people, sometimes people move into Northampton just because of the schools and the classes that they offer. If we don't offer the AP classes, as people have said, those kids are going to go elsewhere. And the money that we lose for those kids going elsewhere is going to have a huge trickle-down effect on all the students. So there are many ways that cutting those classes and cutting those programs are going to impact all the students. I originally was a proponent of late start, but I just can't see how we can institute late start at the cost of these programs, I, I just don't think it's anything that we can do.
Ms. Minnick? Part of the argument for late start was that there was increased, well, I don't need, I don't, that it was better for kids, but I think it's difficult for us to measure exactly how it's better for kids. You know what I'm saying? They've said that studies were done and achievement improved, but it's impossible for us to predict how much achievement would improve for which students, is that, and is it actually all students or is it most students, and so statistically it's a good thing, or is it really every student has improved achievement? And at what level? And, you know, some of the, some of the discussion in some of the late start previous conversations had to do with the fact that we already have kids who are performing at very high levels, some of, you know, is, are they really going to improve a great deal more? And is, I guess I'm thinking, I'm just questioning whether late start really does benefit all students, and whether it really is in a measurable enough way that it's worth what we can calculate as being a measurable problem for, for cutting some other things. I think if we were talking about, if, if we had three things and we were talking about cutting one or the other of them, that would be equal, but we're talking about adding one at the expense of cutting something else, and that's when it becomes awkward for me, I'm not making any sense, but that's, I mean, okay.
It's Fallon and then Ms. Dole.
I was just going to say, I, I understand, I think you were making sense, and I do understand that it's hard to measure, and I know this is a stretch, but it seems like everybody wants to study the effects. We're in the five college areas, aren't there any universities or research programs that want to take us on as a project and maybe study, you know, do some groundwork next year, and then fund the later start and see where we are in two years and say, you know, is that something that you really saw profound enough results? You know what I mean? Have we really hit up every possible avenue for some other funding for this? Because it's true, we won't know, we wouldn't know, and even, yeah, I don't know, yes. Look at me, yeah, next.
No, I, I was just going to say that we're talking a lot about school performance, but the American Academy of Pediatrics is not an educational organization, they focus primarily on health. So again, you know, I can sort of sense where the school community wants to go with this, so I won't belabor the point, but this is not about school performance, which anything is incredibly difficult to measure, the effect, the actual discrete effect, whether it's class size, whether it's teacher skill, whether it's any program, because there are so many variables involved. But I think if you look at childhood obesity, which we know is a problem, I mean, Northampton has 30%, just like the rest of the country, not having sleep is just not healthy, okay? So, and if we don't wish to confront it, then we don't, but I just don't want it to get conflated with that. My other question is, what about the gym teachers? Because I, you know, I was wondering whether that was included in this.
It's not included.
Okay. That's just, makes me even more sad.
Sober.
Because that's, that was five full-time equivalents, I think, was the most expansive...
Yes, I, if I may.
Sure.
I think, I can say with confidence, whatever plan we bring is going to have to be significantly contracted from that, based on looking at our five-year...
Right, I was, I was hoping that there would be some efficiencies gained from allowing other athletic endeavors to count, but still, it's going to be more than...
Just for people who may be watching at home, that's, in trying to move toward meeting our requirements of phys ed, which we haven't been at the high school, and so that's been a goal, to try to move toward that, and that's going to require staffing to do that.
So, to kind of...
Sure, sure.
Okay, the data, you wanted to know the data. The three-year project using data from more than 9,000 students attending eight high schools in three states, and what they did was they collected comparative data about students' academic performance, including grades, attendance, tardiness, and performance on state and nationalized, national standardized tests, and car crash data was also examined. And they found that switching, when switching from later start time, attendance, standardized test scores, and academic performance in math, English, science, and social studies improved, tardiness, substance abuse, symptoms of depression, and consumption of caffeinated drinks decreased, and if you go into it, the obesity and the associated factors also decreased, so. That's the research. And that right there comes from the Discover magazine out of the University of Minnesota, it's of the education, so, but I have other ones too, they all say around the same thing, I just picked one.
So I guess what we need to do is try to focus in for the superintendent, because he's asking us, as he sits down with Ms. Walzak to now take this from a first pass, to start actually building the budget that he wants to bring before you. We need to give him some guidance leaving this meeting, what we need to do. So, to defer to the vice chair.
I would just, I would just add my two cents before I, I would offer my suggestion to the superintendent. And, you know, my observation on the presentation tonight was that I appreciate the brilliance of the presentation and the work that you did with the business administrator around looking long-term as well as short-term. So although we're looking at this year, trying to figure out a way to get the, the late start as part of the budget, and now we'll make a recommendation to you as to whether or not one of those scenarios that you offered would be something that we would like you to pursue for your budget. I just, I want to thank you for considering the budget further out, because I think the mayor and the city has done a great service to us to bring stabilization to our city for the next few years, and to have a plan that aligns itself with the city. We know that there will be a time when the funds will run out, and without any more state aid coming in, we may be going back to our constituents, the people who we live around in our city, and ask them again for an override. We're trying to avoid that, and the city and the mayor has done a very good job to create a plan and to even try to push it out farther. And to have a plan here in the school department that kind of mirrors that, I think only helps us stay in line with the city. So I do very much appreciate your work, and I, and I support the work that you continue to do to try to keep the, the cuts away from, from our table for as long as possible. To you new members that have joined us in the last couple of years, consider yourself blessed that you hadn't had to sit in, and as Ms. Minnick said, as we saw the budget presented tonight, to see things built back in that we negligently cut because our backs were against the wall, and the cuts would have been to a point that they were just unpalatable, that we slashed parts of the budget and never restored it to where it should be fully funded so it operates in a way in which our business administrator can actually use pots of money to pay the bills from those accounts and not have to search for it. They've done a great job, trust me when I say that, in trying to create a budget that is actually sound and can, can be worked from, and not have to go to other pools of money to try to find resources to pay bills that should be planned for throughout the year. So I cannot, I cannot stress how, how wonderful it is to have a budget that takes all those things into consideration. And, you know, whether, whether I seek reelection next year, or who replaces Ms. Minnick as she leaves, or any of us as will be up for reelection, I think it's very wise to think to the future, whether you find yourself at this table or your seat is filled by another individual, you owe it to those folks to look out beyond the decision you make tonight or next month, to those that will be making decisions in the future that will impact the students of Northampton. That's what we're charged to do, to take care of each student and wisely spend the tax dollars that are entrusted to us to make those decisions. So, as we think long-term and we look at the budgets in the future, it's very tempting to want to add something in, because this year it seems like it'll be a great year for students, but in years to come, you'll find yourself wrestling with some very, very difficult decisions, because you, you feel and you'll see the disservice that it'll bring to students as well. So, thank you very much. And with that, I would, my recommendation to you superintendent is to go with the initial plan on a level service budget, which, you know, which does not put any cuts to the arts, puts no cuts to the AP program, and unfortunately doesn't allow for the later start time.
So, are you making that in the form of a, sort of a motion, or...
That would be my recommendation, but if it's, I would, I would be happy to bring it forward as a motion and see if it has any support.
Ms. Hannah?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't really have much to add, but I think it is a really difficult situation we're faced with. What are we charged with? What are we prioritizing? I think it is really clear that if we were to prioritize late start, we'd be prioritizing, moving in the direction of prioritizing the health and wellness of our students. And it becomes, it's a difficult situation that we're faced with. You know, it'd be nice to, I mean, I can't help but sort of think bigger of how this country, and this is a little bit of a speech-making, and I'll make it really short, how this country, what this country prioritizes, and this country clearly does not prioritize human beings. It prioritizes power and wealth, and, and that's kind of a sad statement that we're seeing. So we're coming down to this very local level, you know, we're having to kind of make a tough decision of kind of going with the status quo of what we have prioritized, which is the arts, which is rigor, you know, at the cost of, of the health and wellness of our students. We would hit these same conversations if we really wanted to start talking about what students were eating in the cafeteria, and what the cost would be to really feed students nutritious local food. So, you know, it's, I think sometimes it is easier to, to stay with the status quo when we feel like we don't really have good options, so, it doesn't really move us anywhere, but...
Ms. Minnick?
Just along those lines, I mean, the superintendent's entry findings stated that there were some serious concerns in the district that he felt like needed to be addressed, and he wanted to have some time now to look for the root causes. We had a brief discussion with him after the evaluation meeting earlier this week, several of us, and the, the concern is, when you look for the root causes of some of the, some of the specific things that he found in his entry findings, it gets down to social emotional things for many of our students, and it's things that the schools, that are not necessarily the school's responsibility to handle, like health and wellness, are not necessarily the school's responsibility to handle, and yet, no one else is handling them, and so we do handle them to the extent that we can. And, and in order for us to be able to teach our students, we have to handle some of those things. So we do provide meals for students, maybe not the level of, you know, we, we could be having the conversation about what we serve in the cafeteria, and we could do a better job of those things, but it's, I don't know, this is, it's just really complex. There are a lot of expectations of the school department beyond just educating the kids about math and science and English, or whatever it is. There are, and we have, we have taken on a number of roles over the years, providing a lot of other things. I think that we are, I think that the schools are largely responsible for creating the adult human beings that you see walking the streets. So, in that respect, I actually think that considering the late start time is important, it's, it's one of those factors that contributes to the, to the emotional wellness of our students. So, from that perspective, I agree that it would be an important thing to look at. And if I could be convinced that changing the start time at the high school was going to make a huge difference in the health and well-being of 900 kids, I would probably be voting in favor of it. But, when you consider what the costs will be, and, and I fall back to, to, maybe this is a cop-out, maybe this is me saying, I don't want to be the one to make the decision, but I'm falling back to a recommendation from our superintendent and a recommendation from the high school principal. Both of them have said that, from their perspective as educators, that the late start time makes sense, but that it's not worth giving up some of the other stuff that we would have to give up. And that's truly a function of our financial predicament, and I don't know how we fix that unless there's an infusion of cash from someplace that we haven't identified yet, like, like, maybe there is someplace around here that's gonna...
I'm going to pursue it.
Okay, for you. But, but until that, until she comes back with the, with the purseful of money, I think my, my own feeling is that we have to just follow the recommendations of the people that we've employed to, to lead our district and to carry out our district, to carry out what we want in our district, I should say.
Other, Mr. Byer.
Can I ask a very, this is, this is peripherally related to this high debate.
Sure.
So, in the last, last year's fiscal 15, the level services increase was 528,000, and that's 2.1, it was 2.1% of that budget. I'm just wondering, this year's increase of 810 for salaries, that's not even including all the other things that were maintaining level services, is 3%. And I'm just wondering, was last year's budget wrong? Or are we paying, I mean, are we paying, I mean, because that was, no, that was...
I can't answer that.
But, I mean, it's just, the weird thing is, if in fact we overbudgeted for ESPs, the number should be wrong in the opposite direction.
I think the ESPs have been overbudgeted for a number of years though, so...
But, that, that should make that number right.
Yeah.
It should, it pushes in the opposite, you would say, oh, 528, that's wrong, you subtract the ESP pay from that.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, what is happening this year that's taking us from 2.1% growth to cover all of level service increases from fiscal 14 to fiscal 15, and this year it's 3%, and that's just for salaries? So I guess that's my, I'm just, it's not making sense.
I, I can see if I can find it, I mean, I can't recreate the 15 budget, but one question I would ask that I can look up when I get back to the office is, did you spend more money on school choice in FY15 than you did in 14? If you spent an additional 200,000 in school choice in 15 than you had in 14, there's 200,000.
Right.
And that's easy to look up, I, you know, I can look that far.
Yeah, I think, I think that I made a note a few years ago that we would have to make up for school choice, I wasn't aware though last year that was an issue, but it just, again, you're right, if you're pulling money from a reserve account, it makes it, the increase look smaller, but, but that's why I guess that amount, that 528 is for everything, I guess 810 is for collective bargaining, even 810, looking back at our previous history for collective bargaining, and obviously we had some years where we had contractual, we had contractual zeros for the base wage adjustment, but other than the one year in 2011, we're still paying the 4.5% and 3% step increases, and if I'm remembering correctly, we used... And if I'm remembering correctly, we usually were tracking around $500,000 for wage increases.
Steps for, for unit A alone are close to $400,000 next year.
Well, wait, that's what I'm just wondering, why, why the steps are so much, seem to be so much higher if the steps for the entire, again, that was the information that was being presented to me as a school community member, was that the steps for all of the employees were $500,000. So, I'm just wondering, what has happened? You know, is it just a change in the demographics of the workforce that have made this go from 400 to 800? And if the steps for unit A alone are 400,000, then that means that the steps for the rest of the employers are 400,000 as well?
Now, you've got, you've got the steps for the rest of the employees, you've got the, pretty much the 1.5% COLA increase for all of the employees. And, and that came to, I believe, you know, just over 700,000 and I'm doing this from memory.
Okay.
Is this because the, didn't it go up the last day of the year and then it goes up again?
No, it's a one point, it's a blended 1.5%. So, that, that was taken into account. So, I'm just, I'm just.
It sounds like something you'd be able to sit down with.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, yes.
Just curious about the numbers. Have a little Excel party.
Another eight hours.
As if there's anything wrong with that.
There's nothing wrong with that. That's how I spend most of my days. So, okay. Other, other questions, other comments? Do we want to give the superintendent a clear, do we want to just, you know, get the sense of the committee or do you want to take a vote? Or what, I don't know what your preference is in terms of giving you a clear direction.
I think sense of the committee would be appropriate at this time, since we don't have a vote on the agenda.
That's true. Yeah. And also, yeah, exactly. So, other folks want to, want to weigh in on what they would like to see the superintendent, if you haven't already done that?
Don't look at me, I think I've weighed in.
You've weighed in a lot.
I agree with that.
Okay. Okay.
I agree with that.
Oh, we're sorry.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other questions or other comments before we close tonight's meeting?
I'm not clear.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So, did everyone give their opinion or?
I heard everyone.
Oh, you did? Okay, I didn't. So, I just wasn't listening. I'm sorry about that.
But, it wasn't always bottom, it was not always a winner.
Okay.
Bottom line. Okay. So, then we are now at a point of adjournment. I would just, before adjourn, asking for a motion to adjourn, I would just let people know that our next school committee meeting, where we'll continue this, this looking budget, will be March 12, 2015, 7:15 here. And we'll have a follow-on meeting on March 26, 2015, as well. You're going to be in the community room.
We'll adjourn.
Second.
Your motion may be seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The meeting is adjourned.